Okay, great. We are here on April 16th. I do not know how it is mid-April already. For a regular meeting of the Lake County BOCC. Hal Edwards is here. I'm sorry. So if we could, everyone go ahead and mute cell phones. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, we just have a moment. Sorry, just pulling up the agenda.
I, well, I was gonna just try to be helpful.
Yeah.
I am sorry that I did not track two of the sets of minutes. So I didn't look at the 15th, December 15th, 2023, and December 21st, 2023. Finally found those from an email from Hunter that I can kind of bring to the top of your inbox too, Jeff. And I want to say that because Hal, you weren't here. So I reviewed the other minutes, the other sets, except the 15th and the 21st. So can we table that to our next meeting?
Table the 15th and 21st?
December 15th and December 21st, 2023. But other than that, I have small comments on the other things that we can go through. So I move to approve the agenda with the changes on, yes.
Item seven, let me move to the next meeting.
Item seven will be...
Yeah, the towing.
Towing service agreement, okay.
Correct.
No other changes? All right. So I'll move to approve the agenda with the removal of item seven and the sets of minutes for December 15th and December 21st of 2023. All three of those things tabled for the next regular meeting.
Great. I'll second. Any other changes to the agenda or comments? Call for a vote on approving the agenda with the amendments.
Aye.
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 Great. So the agenda is approved with those changes, which again, just for a group is moving item number seven on towing and December 15th and 21st. Removing those from the consent agenda. Okay. Then community information items and legislative updates. I can, I can start if that's okay. I was in Denver for CCI and CCAT meetings and some legislative meetings. And, you know, the legislature is still, almost a full month out still, and a lot of big items are coming up. I think maybe one that I know Stephanie is paying attention to is the property tax task force recommendations. They voted, that task force that sort of came out of the failure of HH and the special legislative session on property tax changes. They, that task force voted on 10 items, some of which were items to study. And Senator Hanson and other legislators are intent on moving all 10 of those items into legislative action in one bill in the next 20 days. So, and that's about all we know at this point. There's no draft bill on that. Maybe one other thing to note, just on the, on the housing front. One of the, there's a number of bills under the strategic growth umbrella. Those are sort of the, last year, Bill 213 failed. It was trying to impose a lot of changes on local land code. And that's now been broken up into a couple of different bills. But one of them on affordable housing, there had been an issue, particularly for us, that would have required the city of Leadville and us to do our own housing needs assessments and action plans separate from and in addition to the housing authorities. And those thresholds got moved in part because of our advocacy. We were not the only community affected. And jurisdictional assessments now count. So maybe I'll stop there. I mean, there's a lot of bills moving, as always happens at the end of a session. But I think those are two, you know, one, one to track. That'll be a lot of work to track in the remainder. And then some, some good news on housing. Yeah, hold it there.
I, I have a couple of things. Going to the Arkansas Basin Roundtable meeting last Wednesday. I think that was last Wednesday.
Yeah.
A topic of discussion for a large part of the meeting was a couple of bills, one from the Senate, one from the House, regarding the Army Corps, the changes in the legislation with the Water Army Corps of Engineers. And the Senate bill, in summary, I suppose, the Senate bill is drafted to fill the gaps, the void then, left by the change. But the House bill is filling those gaps and then some in all water activity, which is a very high point of concern and contention for everyone from your farmer doing ditch work and what that actually means. The other, so I, I would like to maybe communicate that to our lobbyists as well. And I think that we, the basin is in support of the Senate bill, but not the House bill. And so either support with amendments to just fill in the gaps left in something that mimics what the Senate billing, which looks like, or probably, or maybe oppose it if they aren't gonna consider the amendments. But the other interesting piece about that is the Senate bill names, I think, three, just over $3 million and seven staff people to help implement this. And the House bill names like three or four staff people and $600,000 to do this work, which, and their scope is, includes much more detail and more monitoring and regulation. So those are a couple of things that I kind of learned more about last week.
Yeah. I think we, when we relay that to our lobbyists, I know CCI got, I think, into an amend position on the House bill that's still moving, with amend being like not known amendments. But like, their intent was that there's a huge range of views to the CCI on that bill.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have to get it to speed.
That if anyone could come together on something that could not annoy half of the state, CCI might be the place to have some of those discussions, so.
I would, I would, if you can, I don't know. Not having been at the table at CCI recently, I'll pick your brain on, I don't know where, I'll reach out to.
Yeah, I can look up a tag who the CCI might like stand for and who want to contact is. Any other? Hal, do you wanna, this is just sort of, you know, maybe just, probably we didn't talk about this, is just, you know, there was a particularly interesting meeting or upcoming meeting that you've been a part of, you know, as you get into, as you get into it.
Give me some time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. No, it's just a chance, we've been trying to do a better job of getting word out. So this is that moment to just pull up, pull up, you know, past your upcoming things that aren't on the agenda and are on the right for decision.
One other small thing tonight is the Lake County Conservation District's annual meeting dinner. That'll be held at the Coronado Cafe of the Colorado Mountain College. And we have a panel of folks coming to speak to the group. Bryce Erle, our county water resource manager, is one of them, but other partners with Colorado State Forest Service or the State Conservation District are some of those folks that will be participating.
What time is it?
Uh, 6 o'clock is the start of the dinner. Show up a little bit earlier too, if you want.
They start serving by 3:00. But in 6:00 PM, the presentation is done.
Thanks.
Okay, can move to public comment. I don't see anyone in the room or online. So I think we can move on. And then looking at the first two agenda items, Deidre's listed. Excellent, great. Excellent. Then you have the floor for those first two agenda items.
All right. So for the first one, that's for Colorado Springs Utility, who is a tax exempt organization. However, it was caught on the rolls that they were getting taxes. So they'd like to ask for those fees to be waived.
So is this going forward or is this like a correction of fact?
This is a correction and going forward. It's been changed to reflect their status.
I don't have any other questions on this one. Sarah, are you up here?
On what? Sorry, I'm trying to look at the memo real quick. Which? Were these on, these are on parcels?
Possessory.
That's really interesting. So Deidre said there's like a tower or some tool that they use on Lake County land.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. All right. I don't have any, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Then I'll call for a motion approving the waiving of the 2020 possessory interest taxes for Colorado Springs Utilities in the amount of $203.89.
So moved.
I'll second it. Great. Further questions?
No other discussion for me.
Then I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved, waiving the interest, possessory interest taxes. And on to agenda item number two.
So this is the Lake County Treasurer's first quarter report. As you know, the first quarter just ended, so we're able to get an actual reflection of balances, receipts, and expenses. So that is documentation of that, just to, by evidence, for transparency.
Thanks. That's recorded and available?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think this is pretty routine. Oops. Sorry, just got bumped out of teams for a second. So I'll look for a motion to approve the quarterly report.
Do we approve that or acknowledge it? Sorry. I think I've approved it.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move to, or I'll move to acknowledge the first quarter public trustee report.
I'll second. And call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That first quarter public trustee report is acknowledged. Thank you. Agenda item number three, discussion and consideration of a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for the dilap ditch feasibility and design assessment. And I don't, just want, one thing, I don't think it matters, but I think Kim Lee's misspelled the agenda, but I assume it's good on the PSA.
All right. Thank you, board. So, yeah, this is just following up on the grant we received from the Colorado Water Conservation Board in late January. We've kind of done some thorough review of the bids we got to implement the grant and to engage with the firm. So the first part of that is the dilap ditch engineering and survey assessment. We received two full bids and one for the survey portion only, which was a pretty considerable survey. So you can see in your, in there, the Kim Lee Horn. It's a firm we've engaged with them before. They work with Public Works. They've actually done a field assessment of the ditch work that needs to be done. So they kind of helped us in their capacity as the retained engineering firm for Public Works. They helped us craft the scope of work for the grant. And they came back, and I know the bid amount is more, but they're really familiar with what is actually gonna take to work in this county. They had the most experience in this county. High Country Engineering had a pretty competitive bid, but they don't have any experience in Lake County. And then we also received a survey only portion bid from RLF Consulting, and they're new to the state. So figured it would be good to go with Kim Lee Horn just because their familiarity with the project and working with us here at Lake County.
I, I didn't have any further questions. I don't know, you've been most involved with this, Sarah. I don't know if you want to have any other comments or?
Um, just, I'll just offer a brief kind of background and where this might fit in the overall water resource picture. We have a dilap ditch that we have named in our water decree. And we are able to convey water physically down that ditch. Currently in the state it's in, we cannot do that physically. And so this is taking engineering and the design. And we plan to incorporate this into the larger strategy of serving customers and maximizing the limited water portfolio that we do have. The customer that probably would benefit from this the most might be the mountainous golf course. And so this is just one of those pieces to prepare for the completion of the next agenda item in our water resource assessment. It's possible too that the dilap ditch could be a part of any future storage facility that we might consider on county land at the golf course. It's great in proximity. It would, it would likely play an important role operating that facility and to begin adding to our portfolio.
Hal, I don't know if you had any other questions again.
Yeah, I did. I mean, there's a huge disparity in the bid, bid amount here between Kim Lee Horn and the other ones. What's, is there explanation for that?
Yeah, there is. So first of all, we think that this is kind of exhaustive for Kim Lee Horn because they're familiar with the actual scope of the project. High Country Engineering, my suspicion, I can't say this for sure, but I wonder if they would come in and complete some work and then need some additional funding to do some more detail. The scope of work at Kim Lee Horn was much more detailed, task by task. The High Country Engineering portion, their bid was just a little bit more generic. You know, it pointed to the same items, but not with as much detail, which didn't give me as much confidence that they would actually keep to that.
What needs to be done?
They need to do a full engineering assessment of the ditch. So it's about 1.4 miles long from, it comes directly off the Arkansas River. There's a head gate there. It's actually a named decree or transfer point in our decree. So it's kind of important and already built into our water portfolio and operations. But like Sarah was saying, the actual ditch itself has fallen into disrepair. So we need to look at that 1.4 miles of ditch to see what it actually would take as far as manpower to get it up and running. They're gonna do some hydrological flow studies in that too, just to make sure that what they designed the banks to do will withstand the anticipated flows.
It's currently not being used.
Correct. It hasn't been usable for more than a decade, from what we can tell. It's, it's stayed off the abandonment list through some technicalities. And there's this technical thing they do where they still use the dilap ditch as a diversion point or a transfer point from a river. But they don't actually use the physical ditch. They use a well that comes kind of near the ditch. And so it's this interesting paper exchange where we're technically using the ditch, but we're actually using the ditch transfer right and pulling that water out of a well right from the Arkansas aquifer.
Is it concrete line or just dirt?
That's another thing that'll have to be explored. The grade might have to be changed. Do we pipe it? Do we line it?
And so, yeah, they'll have to, exactly. Lining, piping, depending on what would be most efficient. And, you know, they would have to analyze what the transit losses are gonna be like, just what would absorb into the ground naturally and if that's like an acceptable loss to us. And then the survey portion, you can see is, you know, lowest bid we got was 34,000, but up to 41,000. And that's because the, the actual work on the ground is gonna be really challenging because there's lots of trees in the way. It's a mile and a quarter long, several houses. There's, it goes through the Sugarloaf and campground. And so there's just a lot of feasible obstacles that are making shooting the points and tying it all together pretty challenging. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty involved, but it's very focused on that 1.4 miles. And just from the river to the golf course, there is a little bit more of the dilap ditch, but that's not as important to us in our, our water portfolio. You can actually drink the water out of the, out of the Arkansas into that ditch is pretty difficult because right now it goes in the ditch and flows right back to the river. Yeah. And while the bank is flowing out, so they would have to do something there to make sure that that continues to flow down the ditch and not back through the river. Now, I'm not sure what you could do. You'd probably have to do a lot of concrete to get a ditch back in there and hold, you know, up and out of the river and down the ditch. Because the river's actually lower than the ditch right now. Whoa. I can show you some pictures.
That's not good.
No, it's not a water engineer, but that sounds probably.
Don't need to be a water engineer to know that, right?
Yeah. So I have some pictures that I can show you too.
Please, I'd like to see them. Yeah, it sounds like a very big job.
Yeah. And it's just, it's really important because I think there's immediate use for it or as soon as we get up and running, we can use it with our current plan. But it really ties into any future plans we have, especially for that future storage that I was kind of talking to you a little bit about last week. And if we want that to go and we want that to be on county lands that we have control over it, this is the most viable way to, to make that happen.
Yeah, I'd love to talk to you about it. See the pictures. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Nice. Yeah, great. Well, is there any other questions or comments? I'll look for a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for the lap ditch feasibility and design assessment.
So moved.
I'll second.
No further questions?
Yeah.
I can say, yeah.
Well, I think I already seconded it, so we're good. I'll just turn it, do you see, once a motion's on the table, typically we ask if there's any further comments or questions.
Not for me.
And as we get ahead of ourselves before motions on the table, which is okay. So call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The PSA with Kim Lee Horn is approved.
How is that supposed to be spelled?
I think.
There's an E. There's an E before the Y. Only one.
Yeah. Agenda item number four, discussion and consideration of the PSA with Brown and Caldwell for a Lake County Water Resource and Storage Facility Assessment. Bryce, you're up, you up?
So thank you. This is the other part of that Colorado Water Conservation Grant. And so this is kind of looking at our entire water portfolio and coming up with the most efficient uses or some recommendations on how we can move forward with the implementation of the enterprise and just really use that limited water we have in the best way possible. And then they're also gonna look at some other, seeing that storage is a big kind of thing we have out there that we need to address. They're gonna look at a couple other storage possibilities. One of those is up towards our Dairy 3 diversion point, it's called. So up towards the Mount Elbert Trailhead. There's actually some beaver ponds around there that the state says were actually, they might have been expanded by the beavers, but they're kind of based on some artificially manmade structures from the 50s. And so the state wants us to either, to find a solution for those, either environmentally or breach them so that they don't retain water anymore. And there's maybe an opportunity to partner with the Forest Service to look at those for storage. They're close to our augmentation station. They're pretty high up in elevation, so they wouldn't have as much evaporative loss. We just don't know how viable and how useful they would be until we have a professional engineering firm look at it. And then the other storage option is that golf course on county land storage option that they're talking about. So just kind of doing a little bit of an initial study on those to make sure that we have the best information going forward. We received three bids for the water resource assessment. One was from Brown and Caldwell. The other's from Applegate Group out of Denver, who has a lot of extensive experience in the Arkansas Basin. And then we also received a bid from LRE Engineering, who Lake County has worked with in the past. You can see that Brown and Caldwell, in this case, was actually the most cost efficient one. It came in a little under the rest, which is nice. The reason, the other big thing for Brown and Caldwell that we liked is that Brown and Caldwell is actually the preferred water resource engineering firm for Kim Lee Horn. And so Kim Lee Horn actually kind of reaches out to these folks. And so there's a lot of synergies that are gonna come by having two firms that already work with each other on this combined scope of work for us. What else about Brown and Caldwell?
Some of their background that we liked was kind of being able to take that snapshot and capture in writing what our resources are today. But they worked with the state on the basin implementation planning. And so in our conversations with them, they were, got pretty creative on some of the projects that they've been involved with. And I think that's going to be very helpful for our purposes, not just doing the water accounting, but explaining and capturing and, and keeping in mind like all the different tasks and the timelines because there's so many small things that we need to.
Yeah. And then following the one decree. Timeline especially, that was one of the big things in Brown and Caldwell's favor is that, you know, we're up against it. We have a lot of work to accomplish. And Brown and Caldwell came in with a pretty accelerated timeline compared to the other two firms, just with this understanding that we need more information sooner. And so that was a huge point in our favor. Thank you, Sarah.
Bryce, may I ask, was the matching portion, was that budgeted?
The matching portion was not budgeted. We did not receive this grant until late January.
Thank you.
So the state is going to give us, I believe the number is $151,400. And the county is matching a little over $50,000.
Yeah, I saw it.
We have to, yeah, we have to revisit a water department budget entirely at some point soon.
Just to call up on that, so, so it wasn't explicitly budgeted, but I mean, is it conceivable that it's within the, a water, like, we put some money for water work in the budget, but not, not.
The water budget was very small.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah. That's my fault for overseeing that or, yeah, missing that. But we do need to revisit that. So, yeah, 50, I mean, 50,000, we can take that from our contingency as well. But.
I'm just trying to keep track.
Yeah. No, I didn't mean that as like a criticism. I think in some of the ways, it's good enough to put in like large amounts of placeholder money in a budget so you're sure you know what you're doing.
That's what had been happening for several years. And, yeah, I don't think we had this kind of clarity until the beginning of the year after we were finished with our final 24 budget. So some changes to, for conversation.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or, or we look for a motion?
I'll, I'll move to approve the PSA with Brown and Caldwell for the Lake County Water Resource and Storage Facility Assessment.
Okay. I'll second and ask if there are any other questions since we have a motion on the table? No? And call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. PSA with Brown and Caldwell is approved. Good work. Thanks, Bryce.
Thank you, Bryce.
Agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the PSA with Ida Bailey for account support services to implement GASB standards. Tim is listed. Tim, are you up or Jezro?
I can provide the background. And if you have any technical questions about GASB standards, Jezro can answer those.
Tim, you have the floor, so go ahead.
Okay. So as you know, we have an existing PSA with Ida Bailey. They are helping with, it's a one-time PSA for professional accounting services, assisting the finance department in getting everything in order for review, preparation, and development of work papers and standard operating procedures. One area that we did not have in the original scope of work was helping with implementing GASB or governmental accounting standards boards statements. So what we have learned from our last audit and then with Ida Bailey and our current auditor is that GASB statements 84, 87, and 96 were not, were not completely implemented. So we are just, we are requesting that the Ida Bailey PSA scope of work and the not to exceed amount is changed so we can implement those GASB standards.
I don't have any questions on this.
No.
So I'll look for a motion to put the Ida Bailey PSA, or to approve the Ida Bailey PSA?
So moved.
I'll second. I don't think we have any.
Just, just the amendment to the PSA.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so, so the motion on the table is an amendment to the PSA with Ida Bailey, uh, for account support services. Uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that amendment to the PSA is approved. Thanks, everyone, for catching that and the work on getting us in good shape. Uh, agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of a purchase order with Berry Desk LLC for furnishing the annex. Liz, you have the floor. I know you're very excited about this.
I am so excited that we are at this moment, that we can make a recommendation to go forward with a company to provide us furniture for the annex. So we did put this out to bid, and we got three bids, and I want to recommend Berry because they came in with the best price. They are not charging for delivery. They are not charging for installation. They are not charging to get rid of all of the extra things that come when you move in eighteen different workstations. Also, we can get eighteen different workstations that are appropriately spaced for live, real-sized humans to fit into the annex comfortably with sixty-inch desks. Secondly, they're going to do two different huddle or slash conference spaces. What was the old HR space? We've modified and taken out the screen door. It's fabulous. And then we're going to have a second conference slash huddle space down in where the, um, on the first floor next to CPD as well. So they just really seem like the clear choice. The other piece that I really like is the flexible furniture. So even though we have a plan for this now, there are simple shapes so they can be repurposed when we have other dreams and ideas for the county. And also, I think, I have used your raised furniture before. It's high quality, so it's going to last even longer than the chairs in this room.
Yes.
Which could be a good or bad thing.
Yeah, right.
I'll, I'll move to approve the purchase order with Berry Desk LLC for furnishing, uh, the annex.
I'll second it. Great. I said a question on that overall project. So what, so what's the rough timeline for being like actual staff actually sitting and working in there?
Well, I want a week to live in there by myself and try every chair. So that's going to delay it. But other than that, um, Berry said they think they can deliver the first week of May, if not absolutely the second.
Okay.
And so I think then we need to have a trial run day to make sure all the tech is working. Um, Nev and Tom can get in there to do all the things before their people. So if not the second week, the third week of May, everybody should be over there.
Nice. Okay, great. Uh, I don't have any other questions? So call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so the Berry Desk, sorry, is it PSA or?
Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry.
It is just a list of furniture. I'll send it to you right now.
I mean, purchaser, terms and conditions. Right, please, yeah. Gotcha. Um, because we didn't receive the copy to review. Also, just for like warranty purposes and stuff like that, I'd hate to ask, but, um, perhaps.
We amend that, amend on legal review, just, just be safe.
We were also going to put our PO on it.
Well, that's, that's what I was going to say, so that we can see if we can attach our PO, if we'll accept our PO attached to it.
Okay.
Terms and conditions that we know are what we want. Apologies for not asking for.
Okay, um, I guess look, yeah, look for, for the amendment.
I guess, yeah, I'll move to amend the original approved motion, uh, to include, uh, our, the Lake County PO and to be executed upon final legal review.
Okay, I'll second. I look for a vote on that amendment to the approved motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that amendment is approved. Thank you. Um, okay, we removed original agenda item number seven. I'll, just my own brain power, I'll stick with the original numbering. So agenda item number eight, um, discussion and consideration of an agreement to allow private snow removal contractors to haul snow from private businesses and properties to be deposited in the county's snow dump. Uh, Michael Orwin, you are up.
Cool. Um, so this is basically just to update the agreement that we already have and use, um, to make sure that it's legally good. Um, I do believe that, um, the attorneys have looked at it.
Okay.
And that's why it's before you guys right now. Um, we have not updated it or looked at it since two thousand and eleven, so I figure that was probably time.
Okay.
But we do, we, when contractors like clean out parking lots, they replace the store to spell, we do let them dump it out where we dump all the snow that we haul. Um, they just have to follow some simple rules that, you know, they can't do certain things out there, and they got to be safe. And if they're not, it's all on them and not on us.
Is there one question I had? Actually, first of all, I want to take a second. I really appreciate that we're getting in the habit now of doing the background memos. It's really nice to have that. Um, so, yeah, thank you. Um, do, is there like a volume limit or like i- is that, is that conceivably an issue that a private contractor could actually fill up?
We haven't had any, any problems.
Okay.
Ever filling it up.
Okay.
Haul a lot of snow in the wintertime, so.
Yeah, yeah. I just wasn't sure. I mean, I haven't like gone and looked at those spaces, so.
Yeah, right now it's extended pretty far out there, just.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's another thing that, once they leave the dirt part, get out in the snow, they're responsible if they get stuck.
If they get stuck.
Or fall in.
Yeah.
Right now I would not drive on it because it's snowing out by the day.
Yep. Um, okay, great. Then I, yeah, then if that's not an issue, then, yeah.
And this is at the, to the west of Community Field, yeah, where you're.
Yeah, nowhere else. Is it just there or is it also the one up, like, or maybe is it the city's?
No, this is for our, the community part.
Okay. Cool.
I'm going to approve, um, the updated agreement to allow private snow removal contractors to haul snow from private businesses and properties to be deposited in the Lake County snow.
I'll second it. Great. Uh, unless there are any other?
I have no more, yeah, discussion. Thanks, man.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and that motion is approved for the private snow removal, um, contractor agreements, agreement. Um, great. Thanks. And I, and also I really appreciate, yeah, just like not letting old agreements languish forever. So I think it's great, just agreement by agreement, tidying up things, so.
Yeah, we got somebody come in, one of, one of the side one up, and it's like, oh, we just looked at.
Yeah, great, no. Um, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, posted agenda item number nine, uh, discussion and consideration of the ratification of the CDOT contracts for developing the Lake County Transit Program. Uh, Tim, you're up on this one.
Sure, thank you. Um, so this builds off of Lake County's award of multimodal transportation and mitigation options funding, uh, or MMOF, uh, through CDOT, Colorado Department of Transportation. Um, this is a combination of state and federal funds. Um, and it can be used, is going to be used, um, for the purchase of the coaches for the Lake County Transit System and then the funding of the operations and administration of that. So we were awarded two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, um, for the purchase of the vehicles and eight hundred and eighteen thousand for the operation and administration of the transit program, uh, for local matches, um, respectively is seventy-two thousand and then two hundred and seventy-two thousand. Um, so those have been built into the budget and were approved in the twenty-four budget. Uh, the city has also contributed to the local match. Um, this is, has been a long time coming, but these, um, contracts are before you for ratification. The next step will be releasing the RFP, um, for operation of the transit, um, of the transit program. And, uh, that, um, legal's finished its review. I'm doing my last review of it, so hopefully we can have that out, um, by next week.
Nice. I had one question on the local match. I know there'd been some issue with like how CDOT was calculating that, and I know on like the, on, it was a little impenetrable or there were different numbers. Did that, that, that's like run to ground and these are like the final, final numbers with CDOT's blessing?
Great. Yes, the, yeah, final numbers with CDOT blessing, um, also confirmed by Commissioner Marcela, uh, before she left. So these are the right numbers.
Great. Um, great. Any other questions?
How many coaches?
Uh, currently there are two on order.
And this is going to be seven days a week, five days, daylight hours only?
Yeah, the goal is, uh, seven days a week, but that might have to start, uh, smaller during, during peak times. Uh, the full transit schedule has not been determined yet. There are various options of the work that Farron Peers, or the transit consultants, have proposed. Um, you know, we, we know that early morning, um, getting folks to the bus stops for Eco Transit and Summit Stage are important. And then, of course, you know, after work, so we know those peak hours. So it might not start, um, as, you know, full day service, but focus on early morning and after work. Uh, it just depends on the capacity to, to get it off the ground for the, for the first, uh, first runs.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, the coaches will be purchased, but, um, is it, will those then, I mean, I guess we're not certain. We're putting out the RFP to see if a company will operate this for us, and those coaches will be contributed to that operation with some agreements on how they're used and the maintenance and all of that. Um.
Great. Sorry, correct. Um, so the, the award for the coaches, you know, would be, you know, Lake County asset, and then, you know, Lake County ensures that all federal, um, you know, ADA and non-discrimination compliance, uh, things are met via our contract with, um, you know, with whomever bids and whoever wins. Um, but those would remain Lake County's assets.
This is going to be operated by contract employees or county employees?
It would be, the intent of the RFP is having it, uh, run by contract employees. Um, should we not get, you know, any favorable bids or not be able to pull it off, um, then we, um, the backup plan, Plan B, would be county employees and then hiring those folks on. So we do have the flexibility built into the award for contract service or for county-operated service.
Thank you.
Um, I'll approve the ratification or move to approve the ratification of the Colorado Department of Transit or CDOT contracts for the developing Lake County Transit Program.
Uh, I'll second. Uh, and I don't have any further questions or comments.
Nothing further for me.
We're good. So call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, that, um, CDOT contract, uh, for the Lake County Transit Program is approved. Um, thanks for everyone, including Commissioner Marcel, former Commissioner Marcel, for getting this closer and closer to the finish line. This is great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, uh, original agenda item number ten, discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty-four dash twelve, a resolution of Lake County, Colorado approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal period beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-four and ending on the last day of March twenty twenty-four? Is that correct? Okay. Um, sorry, I didn't catch that before. Um, so Tim, you have the floor on this one?
Sure, thank you. Um, so as we continue to improve and refine, um, our budget and finance operations, uh, you know, in the past, there would be a sweeping, uh, supplemental budget towards the end of the fiscal year on, you know, all things that had happened in the fiscal year that needed to be addressed or to move money around. So we are making strides, making the moves towards doing this quarterly. Um, you know, at some point, there'll be a point where, you know, the, the budget changes will not be, you know, obviously this large or, or needed. There are things that, um, can be done in the finance office and, and catching things and working things that can be improved onto like a monthly basis. But anyway, um, so we've done the fourth, first quarter review of twenty twenty-four's budget, and this is a request to supplement that budget and move funds around. So Stephanie had this posted in the paper last week, and then in there you see, um, where the funds, um, and, and what funds are coming from, um, are being moved to and what they are needed for. And happy to answer any questions. And then, you know, Stephanie and Jezra can help with any, any technical questions I, I'm not able to address.
Yeah, any questions on that? So, so these, these movements are all in that section one of the resolution?
Yes. Do we have any questions?
Okay. Yeah, so I was just looking this over again. Yeah, I think all of these make sense to me. Yeah, actually, maybe, maybe just, uh, a comment on the, um, on that large one for the landfill compactor. So we didn't, we didn't have that in the budget because we didn't know if we were going to, like, we just didn't know when the payment for that was going to come, come in and be due. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, in the, in the twenty twenty-three budget, you had approved, um, Public Works and the landfill to look for a used or new, uh, landfill compactor. There were not any used ones on the market. Um, so we had the approval to move forward for a new purchase. Uh, throughout twenty twenty-three was, you know, the construction and then delivery of said piece of equipment, which I actually believe came in January and February. We did not do any roll-forwards or encumbrances for, uh, that purchase to go forward. So we do need to reflect that in the twenty-four budget.
Okay. Okay, yeah, just since that's a big one.
Yeah, and the roll forward is this six hundred and ninety-six thousand?
Correct.
Or that's the actual balance, but we're not, I mean, the.
It, um, it, sorry. Um, it is being split out of, um, landfill, so you'll see that contingency fund of the six hundred and ninety-seven thousand and then five hundred and forty-two thousand out of the landfill fund.
Oh, gotcha.
Wow, yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, the other thing, I guess, just the expense on the community feasibility study and seeing the revenue and expense for the water expenditures, do we have a revenue for the feasibility study? We also have to add the revenue with a grant?
The, for the, for the grant revenue, uh, we don't need to, you know, you, um, approved the application and then receiving of that grant revenue already. This is the matching funds for that, for DOLA.
Okay. Okay. And I'm sorry, the water revenue, I don't think is related to a grant. It's, it's, it just.
Correct.
I'm just making sure. Okay. Great. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm move to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twelve, a resolution of Lake County, Colorado, approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado, and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal period beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-four and ending on the last day of March twenty twenty-four. And that's just the title of the resolution.
Great. I'll, I'll second. Uh, unless there are any other questions or comments, uh, call for a vote?
Nothing further for me.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so twenty twenty-four dash twelve is approved. Thank you. Um, and on to, uh, eleven, uh, discussion and consideration of funding for legal support for Cloud City Conservation Center. Uh, Tim, you're listed on this one as well. I think you talked with C4.
Yeah, excuse me. So based off of last week's work session, uh, where we discussed the solar garden, um, and then C4 taking the lead on that project, they have received some, uh, funding from Parkville Water and then, um, the nonprofit financing. Uh, I'm forgetting that. They've received some funding for the legal fees to cost this, uh, to cover the costs, uh, for the legal work, uh, on the solar garden. So the request that they had was a request up to fifteen thousand dollars, uh, to C4, um, for those legal services. You do have room in your contingency budget, uh, just a determination of the amount that you would like to award for those legal services.
Wait, or go ahead, Bryce.
I was just going to offer that, uh, we've been in contact with C4's attorney, who is Melanie Barton, who's a very well-established and has a high level of expertise with nonprofit and acquisition matters. Um, and so we've been spending a lot of time working for two. In terms of taking the lead on the project, I wouldn't, I don't know if they're going to take the lead on the overall project. I think they're taking the lead on the attempt to acquire the assets that are out there. Um, and so we will continue to need to work with them, especially in terms. And so we will continue to need to work with them, especially in terms of assignment of the ground lease if we get to that point and other any other issues that would interact with the county as well. So I don't want to think that this is something that's going to C four and then we're out of it. So I think we're gonna continue to have to work with them very closely on that transaction.
Yeah. And again, this is sort of from the work session. This is sort of step one of just securing ownership before the step of actually making the technical fix to get operational.
And so this fifteen, the 15,000, I thought was an original, like for that first step maybe and shared. But will this, I don't, I apologize, you know.
I think I think the
Is that
I think in the work session, we talked like the total legal fees were was being estimated at like 25 to 30,000. So this like, you know, a potential, you know, potentially 15K, would it be like our?
Part of it, I I'm gonna be honest with you. I think based on the amount of time that Melissa spent for doing and researching this, that's a very conservative estimate of what it's actually going to cost for the legal fees for this. We are sharing all the information in hopes that they will not duplicate those efforts. But, you know, Melanie, as their attorney, is gonna have to chase her her own skeletons and stuff like that to figure out some of the answers that we have not been able to find yet either. So it will not surprise, I'm just saying that it will not surprise me if they come back and say, we need. So I think this is a first installment to get us down the path to figure out if it's worth pursuing and what that path will be.
Yeah. And again, we're could, we're potentially committing a dollar amount, not a percentage amount. So that, so it will come back. Was, yeah, I had headlight, I had from my notes from last week, I had had 10,000 more in my head, but I mean, I think you're right, like the complexity of it. Yeah. I I think I'm comfortable with that 15,000, given what you said.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I'm I'll make a motion to approve up to $15,000 contribution towards C four's legal fees with continued close communication with our legal team and status updates and progress.
Yeah. And I guess a quick question for for Tim or Chris. I mean, if if we're proving up to that, I mean, what's the actual mechanism for making that contribution? Are we gonna see, are we gonna see invoices from them or are we just gonna, or like, or?
What I would recommend is that for our contribution is we can ask Melanie Bartlett's firm to submit a general invoice for the 15, which is essentially a retainer, if you will, to words the fees that will be charged against it. But since she is C four's attorney, we will not see statements like you would get from attorneys working for the county because those would be submitted to attorney by privilege, the specific items that they're working on. So.
I I get, sorry, still not quite, so I I wasn't sure if we were, or is the mechanism, are we gonna reimburse C four? Or are we gonna work, are we gonna pay directly to the attorney?
It's whichever one.
Okay, okay.
I mean, whichever, but I would say my suggestion would be we either pay C four the flat 15K big bill against. Otherwise, having to process the statements each month will add to the finance. And it's not gonna take long to burn through that, so.
I mean, I'm, I guess for me, I'm fine at this, I'm fine to just structure it as a upfront, flat 15K to C four.
My suggestion would be to do it for C four, not specifically just for the legal fees because there might be some other things, yeah, to assist with their acquisition or their attempts to acquire something like that. So it's not just for the legal fees.
Okay.
Okay, well, there wasn't a second, so that can die. And so we can change that.
Okay, I I mean, I can, or I I can take a crack at that motion then, if that's okay. So a move that we approve a payment of $15,000 to Cloud City Conservation Center for legal support and associated costs for C for securing ownership of the Lake County Solar Garden. Did that cover it, Chris?
Well, I was hoping to leave the legal cost part out of it, but that's, it's fine. Just so that you, if you've been contributed to C four, then they use it as they need it for the project. Their attempts to acquire. And so
Okay, I guess, I I said legal costs and other associated costs for securing ownership. So that's in broad, if I'm
I just don't want there to be any confusion. We're not engaging that attorney.
Correct.
Yeah. So the county's not engaging.
But the motion was for Lake County to contribute the 15,000 to C four, for C four to spend it on their legal fees. I didn't use the word their, but I think it was pretty strongly implied. Like, we're, we're make, motion was for us to make contribution to C four, for them to spend on legal fees and other associated costs for securing ownership of the solar garden.
Right. I still, I'm just uncomfortable with the legal part. And that would be just for, to contribute the 15 with the cost associated with their acquisition or the the project, if you will. And that would be because I just, it just, I don't want there, there is something, we don't want something of where we don't want somebody to say that they were co-counsel to the county or anything like that, that they are separate. So it's just giving C four, allocating 15 grand to C four towards their, yeah, cost, the associated cost, one of which will be legal fees.
Okay, I I can withdraw that motion and make it more general. So move that we approve expenditures of $15,000 to Cloud City Conservation Center, C four, for the costs associated with C four acquiring ownership of the Lake County Solar Project.
Second.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion is approved. Thanks, everyone. Also, I I had a quick chat with Emily at some point in the last work session, and I misspoke at the work session or we didn't understand the actual detailed engineering work on what the fix is. And an actual estimate based on that design work has been completed by the operating entity. And it, you know, as of when they did it in the last year, it was under 300,000 for that fix. And again, that that design work has been completed, so will not need to be paid for in step two. Yeah, yeah. Just a little glimmer of encouragement that this might actually happen. Okay. Agent, I have number 12, County Manager's Monthly Report. Tim?
Sure, thank you. And if you have any, you know, questions or anything further on the report out, please feel free to ask and interrupt me. So on the tourism front and with the changes that we've made there. So Katie Hild is starting May 1st as our new Tourism Visitor Center Manager. Adam Ducharme, who's our Tourism Director, has met with the Chamber of Commerce to discuss the transition of the Visitor Center to the Bank Building across the street. That a big spot there. That hopefully should be able to take place in mid-May. And that's in partnership with Climax and Freeport-McMoRan. They are also working on a new logo and a new website. On our IT front, the VoIP phones, Voice Over Internet Protocol phone systems have been installed. So everybody with a desk phone has their new phones and they are working. And Commissioner Edwards, yours is on order and should be here this week. Tom and Nev have been able to finish the work that was started last year with the asset sheet and date on workstation installation, you know, where the IT hardware and machines and everything is at. So they can identify the the lifecycle and the replacement parts better. For public health, we have received the first disbursement of the blood lead funding from the Asarco Trust this year. Our Clinical Programs Coordinator, Ashley Hogg, has started doing the blood lead events again at, you know, preschool and kindergarten, kindergarten. Rochelle has been doing great over at the Senior Center. Group meals and transportation services are up and more popular than ever. And Elena, who's our Environmental Health Specialist, is working on childcare health inspections. And then they are working on a new temporary event fee policy specifying the requirements that would be, you know, exempt, which includes nonprofits that are directly benefiting our community and raising money for food insecure communities. On the HR front, our internships are starting. The interviews for those will start the second week of May. So we will have seven departments participating this year. So the landfill, maintenance, public health, IT, get outdoors lead bill, Office of Emergency Management in the airport. The high school has shifted a little bit how the internships are done. So the high schoolers are required to complete 80 hours of an internship before graduation. So we'll start to be cycling through, you know, some more interns every year. At your next regular meeting will be a decision item on the DEI RFP. We've received 12 bids from that and Zoe and Karina are reviewing those. So that'll be DEI training ship for leadership and all staff. There'll be some more HR handbook changes coming to you soon. Zoe and Karina are working on a monthly employee newsletter. So kind of, you know, continuing to break down some silos, spotlighting departments internally, understanding what they do, having in a section for any department's events that are, you know, open to everyone and especially county staff and then, you know, new hires, things like that. Karina has started studying for her SHRM, which is the Society of Human Resources Manager Exams. I'll take that in May, so wish her luck. It is a beast of an exam and a credential, but it'll be great for her and her professional development. On a larger front, Anthem, which is our insurance carrier, has been working, well, maybe not working, with Cinsura Health over in Summit County. Cinsura probably is trending towards Cinsura no longer accepting Anthem Insurance, which obviously has an impact on our workforce for anyone who goes over and receives services in Summit County. You know, Anthem will be required to provide a, you know, an alternative list of facilities. But, you know, for a lot of our staff, that'll be a dramatic change. So Zoe and I are taking the lead on working with CTSI on our health pool, see if there can be changes or bidding out to some other insurance carrier besides Anthem. So staff can keep the care that they're receiving. Claire has hired a deputy director over in OEM. Sam Ruttenberg starts on the 29th. Very excited to have her start. Claire's been without a deputy for a while, so this will just continue to maximize all the awesome work that Claire does. And Claire has finished the Elected Officials and Executive Staffs Guide to Emergencies and Disasters. So she's presented this to the board previously. And then, of course, Commissioner Edwards, she would love your feedback on it, to see what's helpful and not and what could be added in there. So part of a, you know, transition process and ensuring that everyone has digestible information when it comes to emergencies. Mabel, Liz, and Claire took a two-day class on continuity of operations planning, which is part of Claire's theme this year for departments and working on that and our continuity of government plans for Lake County Government. So there'll be more to come on that and work sessions with the board briefing you on your COOPS and then what continuity of government looks like should a disaster happen in Lake County. You have the landfill. We're working with the engineer team on the new EDOP for the lined landfill. We are still waiting on a response from CDPHE, their solid waste department. Jokingly waiting for mud season to be done because, as you can imagine, it's muddy at the landfill. And they are working on hiring two FTEs. Maintenance, switching from winter activities to spring and summer activities. They're also hiring and they are helping fill, complete the annex, painting and remodel. Roden Bridge, Michael has had some success recently. He's hired two FTEs and one part-time equipment operator, so we are closer to being fully staffed. This week, he will start opening County Road One, which is Fifth Street up to County Road 38, where the Hope More Mine is. And then, starting around Turquoise Lake, County Road Four and Nine will be next week. Should all things go well, we're waiting for this past, this most recent storm to to melt away a little bit bit more. They have started their spring and summer schedule, so they are on four 10s. But they're on a split shift, so there is coverage Monday through Friday. You know, if there's another storm and they need coverage for that. Over in comm, Sarah's been working with the creative firm. So kind of, and one more touch and update to our logo so that the bottom portion, I believe, department names can be added in there into the seal. The one-page style guide is growing into a mini-brand book. And then the design templates for the PowerPoints and memos and business cards, all of that good stuff is coming soon. And the website accessibility project is moving full speed ahead. Working with other counties, there's a lot of angst with this among other counties about the requirements in this. I do really appreciate and support the the tact that Sarah's handled this with and seeing it really as a culture change so that everyone has access to Lake County Government's resources and documents. So I like, I like that culture shift that we are doing. And she's been able to bring four of our microsites, so the airport, OEM, the sheriff and wraparound into Lake County's main site, which means that'll cover those accessibility standards. And have, she's found a template for us for accessibility requirements for contractors and those RFPs when we put those out, ensuring that their products are accessible as well. In terms of me, my hiring, I am down to two finalists for the Deputy County Manager position, and I hope to make a decision by Friday. And we'll keep you posted on that. And for that, that is the the broad overview of the monthly happenings at Lake County Government. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thanks, Tim.
Any questions or? Yeah. I was gonna make a quick comment. It's just great to see progress on hiring. I know, I mean, that can be hard. So it's great to see us being able to fill fill positions with with good candidates, so. That's great.
I have a question on the culture replacement on Cataract 11 update.
And I'm sorry, Michael's not here because I know that Chris and Melissa have been working to move that forward.
Well, I mean, I don't know if if we'll have, be able to have a discussion with the landowners or not, or we need to kind of like, we've crossed that bridge a few times and go into the what did we do with the UP property, the eminent domain for access?
Yes, that that's in, into, it was my understanding that we were in communications with Elaine to tee that up. And I apologize if I didn't anticipate the question, so I'm
No, that's okay.
I can follow up and follow up what the status is.
Yeah, I just wanna, I mean, I know that was punted from in anticipation of, well, I guess we didn't anticipate the challenges with that. So I just wanna throw that out there about if we need to expedite that.
Yep.
That might have to happen outside of our regular meeting schedule, but it's
And I, I think there's, there's still several options on the table, Commissioner. You know, one of them might be compensating one of the landowners, which might, you know, be a last resort or a resort before eminent domain for access. I don't know yet that we are at the point of escalation with the B O C C, but we will get you a better update on that. But perhaps a conversation with the landowners with, you know, a board delegate or the full board may be helpful.
Okay. Tim, thanks for running through that update. It's great to see those bullets. So I think we can move on to the consent agenda. And when we prove that, we did remove the December 15. we did remove the December fifteenth, uh, and twenty-first minutes. Um, I didn't have anything of substance on the others, but Sarah sounded like you had some changes.
I do. I'm really sorry that I didn't forward those in advance. So I don't know if we're gonna go through them briefly or try to be brief about it. Um, Hunter, do you, um, I guess on, let's see, where's my list? I'll start with the earliest, the December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Um. I think it was a special meeting, and it's listed as a regular meeting. I mean, these are the kinds of things that are just like small details. Um, and then I think there was, item number eleven was, in the minutes was captured with item number ten. And though they were related, I think they were two separate items. Um, I will also send you the track changes on each of these, if you want, so that's for.
You could include all three of us. That would be great, 'cause I think Cindy is the one that did those.
Okay. I'll do, I'll forward that with, to the board and you, Cindy and Tracy.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, let's see, Feb, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, a special meeting. I don't think I had anything on those, August eighteenth. Sorry, I think we're going down the way they listed, August eighteenth. Um. I'm just, I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm missing.
That's okay, we got it. While you're looking for that, just, um, a, a general find and replace for my last name being spelled Fielder would be good.
You should just change it for Argonian.
Might be easier.
All right, I take back to the February, the February twenty-eighth special meeting. Um, I had two corrections on the name, the spelling of the names of the public that commented. Um, so that's, again, I have that in the track change. Um, I'll share that with you.
Yeah, 'cause I think all these ones that are listed would have been done by Cindy and Tracy, 'cause my two were tables.
Okay. Um, the October third, twenty twenty-three, um. Uh, I just have the, I just have some additions that make it make sense or more sense on like the commissioner informational items, the trivia night to benefit Bright Start. And then the Canora Two should be completed. It says competed, just completed. And then regarding the, um, Canora Eleven culvert replacement, just some more context, which I believe was mentioned there. Also not a huge deal. Um, on the August eighteenth meeting, um, again, there's like the LOI, letter of interest for Proposition One, Two, Three, um, in one of the references on LOI, it's LO One. So I got that looked at. Um, and then there was a motion that failed, um, or did not pass, rather, but then I think there was direction in addition to that regarding the infrastructure grant. So I just have a note to look at that and make sure that you, that we've captured, um, all of our formal, um, a, action taken there. Um. Who's on the list? Uh, do you have the number one? Number one, I don't think. I have anything there. Um. November second, I think, again, change, I think it was a special meeting, not a regular meeting. Um, so just change that on the title, and then I don't think there were any decisions, which is also appropriately captured in the minutes for that one. Um. Special meeting, February thirteenth, the only thing, I think, our signature lines just need to be changed to show that Jeff is, I think I'm still listed as the chair, Kayla's vice chair, so just fixing those, and I've got that track changed, um. And that is it for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, sixteen points. Well, no, seven, 'cause we, yeah.
Okay.
Just kind of grammatical, small things, if you're comfortable with those. I'll highlight them.
I'll pass the one to them, 'cause I didn't start doing minutes until November.
That's great. I'll send, I'll send all of these to everyone. Um, but if y'all are comfortable with that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the, um, identified and shared track change, changes to the minutes.
Okay. Second, great. Um, then call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda with the noted changes is booked. And with that, we are adjourned at twelve twenty PM on the sixteenth. And I'll go cool down somewhere.
Oh, no, you're gonna stay here. Done. Not quite yet. All right. Thanks, thanks, Tim. Anything else before we sign off?
No, I'm, I'm around. If you guys need me, let me know.
All right. So Harry Back, have you?